The meeting number 27 will now come to order. May we have that play in the National Anthem? Councilmember Bangston, do you read us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, we have Bishop Hezekiah Martin of Southfield Community Missionary Baptist Church to lead us in prayer tonight. Bishop, thank you for being with us. Welcome back to council.
Let us pray. Gracious and all wise God, we thank you for allowing us to assemble. We're grateful that last night was not our last night and that you woke us up this morning in our right minds. But God, we ask for your presence in this place. It is our prayer, God, that you will lead our council with wisdom and guidance to make the right decisions, that, God, that will affect our community as a whole. But God, let your love and your peace reign in this place and throughout the world. We need you, God, like never before. We need you in our homes. We need you in our community centers. We need you in our schools. We need you even in this building where decisions are made. True and living God, please allow your presence to invoke in this house and over these who are your servants that you have called for such a time as this. We thank you, God, for them and their servant leadership. We ask that you will continue to cover them and cover their homes and their families as they give their best to you. Tonight, God, have your way in this place and let your spirit be felt because we need peace all over the world. We need peace in this community. We need peace and love throughout this city. God, use your servant leaders tonight to help lead your people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Bishop. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcara, Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans. Any person who takes any action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Thank you. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal?
No move.
Is there a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcara, Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Seeing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed in the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be written on the record?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Move towards resolutions and announcements from council members. Councilmember Bangston? Councilmember Barosa de Padilla?
Thank you, President Pro Tem. I do have two quick announcements. The first is Happy Bike Month. I was not here yesterday. We'll be celebrating next week with a resolution, but I just wanted to acknowledge all of our cyclists and all the folks who make it better and easier for us to cycle throughout the city. So for those of you, if you are not an avid cyclist, break out that bike and celebrate with all of us. Secondly, I want to extend a congratulations to our new Public Service Director, Kelly Scacco. She was... Yes, please. It might have been a bit delayed since I wasn't here, but I want to... Oh, perfect, perfect timing. What is time? I don't remember when the announcement went out, but I wanted to just acknowledge that the director is here. She's been with the department for many years, has been in transit for even longer, and so I just want to take some my congratulations. And Director, if there's anything that you wanted to say?
Thank you. No, I'm just entirely or incredibly grateful to step into this position and to help lead the amazing team that public service is and to move Columbus forward with our transportation and public service efforts.
Absolutely. And the folks at Public Service have definitely won over my heart over the last three years, and it is such a great group of people that you get to lead. And I'm excited for your leadership, especially as we look at... I was just saying this a second ago. We are changing the conversation and the culture of transit in Columbus. Everything from rail to bus rapid transit to making it safer with Vision Zero to our Bike Plus plan. It is an exciting time. And, you know, we... Director Gallagher passed on the baton, and I'm so excited to be a partner with you. So congratulations again. That's all for me, Pro Tem.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember De Alcara? Thank you. Councilmember Green?
Yes, so I just wanted to make a quick announcement that this week is Trauma Informed Awareness Week. Trauma Informed Care seeks to realize the widespread impact of trauma and understand paths for recovery. The Columbus Care Coalition has been absolutely integral in this work of trauma-informed care here in Columbus, and they take a collaborative approach to address community trauma and uplift resiliency in our community. And so the Columbus Care Coalition is going to be hosting a number of events throughout the week that are listed on the screen, although it's very hard to see here. So if anyone in the room is interested in learning more, they can chat with our team in the back there, and we can get you that information. But are very grateful for the work that Columbus Public Health and our Care Coalition is doing and am happy for the opportunity to uplift Trauma Informed Awareness Week. That's all for me.
Councilmember Remy?
Thank you very much, President Pro Tem. I would just like to recognize that May 8th through 18th is Light Ohio Blue Week. And in light of some tragic events this weekend, particularly in Euclid where an officer was ambushed and killed, and then, of course, two of our own took fire and was... There was a couple of incidents over the weekend. Just want to recognize the hard work and dedication that our Columbus Division of Police does to protect the citizens of the city of Columbus. And so keep those people in your mind. Gun violence has got to stop. And, you know, put the guns away, man. This is not good. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Weich?
Yeah, just a quick announcement. On Wednesday, we will be hosting the zoning gallery event for sustainability and environmental folks. So from 5:30 to 7:30, stop by 141 North Front Street just to kind of see the zoning changes and offer any amendments that you may have. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate you hosting that zoning event and wanted to remind anyone who's watching tonight that we are in day 35 of the zoning 60-day puppet comment period. So if you haven't made plans yet to visit the zoning gallery or review the proposed zoning code and map changes, please try and take advantage of that prior to that June 10th deadline. You can find out more on columbus.gov/zzoningupdate to find about what this proposal means for your neighborhood and the city at large. Before we move on, I also did want to wish Charmaine Chambers from our clerk staff happy birthday. So I won't make everyone sing, but we'll try to make sure the meeting goes quickly so that you can go back to your family and enjoy the rest of your birthday. Any comments from our other elected officials here at the city attorney's office? Schreger? At this time, I request the filing ordinances be removed in consent action portion of the agenda. Housing Homelessness and Building Committee ordinance number 1142 and ordinance number Are there any other requests by members of council for removal of ordinance or a resolution for the consent portion of tonight's agenda? Seeing none, maybe have a motion to waive the reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Is there a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcara, Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation in tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance and Governance Committee ordinances 1194, 1215, and 1296-2024. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinances 1282 and 1305-2024. Workforce Education and Labor Committee ordinances 0975-2024. Housing Homelessness and Building Committee ordinance 1396-2024. Health Human Services and Equity Committee... I'm sorry. Ordinance 1286-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee ordinances 0670... 0670-775, 945, 1177, 1219, and 1301-2024. Zoning Committee ordinances 1329 and 1335-2024.
Thank you. We do have several speakers on tonight's first reading agenda. First, we have Mr. Nate Wilkins, who's just finding in favor of ordinance 1396-2024. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council.
I just want to hold a deal for a minute. Yes, I am for it for several reasons. And let me say why. 1612 Arlington Avenue, Pennsylvania, George Wilkins, the North London resident for the last 15 years. I'm coming to you now, this code enforcement. I know y'all want to hire more people. Just bear with me for a minute. We have this today, a vacant and abandonment sign. I purchased my home in 2007. I'm coming to you today with different ideas. I'm going to be in support of this for $1.7 million. And let me say that again, $1.7 million. It's because we want to create a new team. A new team can tackle two things here. Vacant and abandonment properties, lapped dated homes. That's one idea. I'm questioning for a pay raise for these new officers, code enforcement officers. The next idea will come, a vacant abandonment team for commercial and vitalized structures. We talk about this, sit vacant and abandonment, decades and time after time. Another property can vacant and abandonment, torn down for future development. An idea will come here, a vacant abandonment home for the last 17 years. We don't want one sticker that's slated for orange all over the city of Columbus. A yellow means a 30-day notice to find the property owner. A blue, a 10-day notice also be put in the paper, a front day's paper. Let me say why I came up with this is because I'm tired of looking at... A vacant home is a death sentence. If a person goes to jail and have life in prison, that's a death sentence. The same thing for a vacant and abandonment property. It sits there, rot over time after time. 1621 at Gendysay Avenue, took a walk through, cut the grass and everything. Nobody can get the property. It sits vacant, abandonment, and rotted. And here today, we have a habitat house in a place of that with tall grass and high weeds. I don't understand why I question for this, but I want $1.7 million. That's what I want. For these new officers, the top pay will start at $35 an hour and end up with $62 an hour, a 48-hour work week. Here I am, going all over the city, looking at this and looking at this. Why can't this be turned into a real size grocery store for lending? We are in a food desert right now. We're tired of looking at a vacant property sitting on Cleveland Avenue. Won't we do something and change the color code of this today? Today. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. The next speaker to come for council on the first reading portion of our agenda is Mr. Reverend Charles Leister, who is speaking for ordinance number 1396-2024. Reverend, welcome back to council.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Charles Leister and from New Beginning Christian Center, and our congregation and others are a member of, involved with the Bread Organization. We strongly support ordinance 1396-2024. This is one step in the right direction of holding predatory or neglectful landlords accountable. Gathering outside is a delegation of Bread members. We're here because the housing crisis is getting worse. Ordinances like this help to move things in the right direction, but it's not enough. We are not building enough housing in Columbus to match our population growth. That shortage is allowing landlords to increase rents and, in some cases, take advantage of renters. This brings to mind the closing of Latitude 525, Colonial Village, and now Riverview Apartments. Each of these could have been prevented if the city had proactively approached to hold slum lords accountable. This is costing the city and taxpayers millions of dollars to fix a problem that could have been fixed sooner. We have asked President Harden and Councilmember Faver here with us... Not here with us, but to invite them to join us for the Bread Nehemiah Action on May 21st after Mayor Ginther's State of the City address. To come and hear the community's version of the real state of our community. You can still attend our event between 7:30 and 8:15 as we have our members share their housing stories. We're also asking you specific questions to commit, to work with us to continue to move the needle on housing in the right direction. We have a hard copy of those questions for President Harden and Councilmember Faver, as well as the other council members, if you'd like. And we developed these questions after talking to many housing professionals in our community. Concerning Nehemiah Action, we're asking only that statements from the council be in person at Nehemiah Action next week. We can set the meeting before we leave tonight, if we can, to see those who will be able to join us at the action. We hope to see you at Nehemiah Action. You can also call us at 614-220-9363 to schedule a meeting with us beforehand to confirm your attendance at the action. All of this is included in the hard copies of the questions, as well as a hard copy of a letter from the Bread Clergy Caucus. If a staff member could meet me, I'd be glad to provide the documents for the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend, and I appreciate Bread's continued advocacy on the housing crisis that our community has faced. I think, you know, the reports that we've seen over the last several weeks about people being forced in their homes, many of those residents have reached out to council, have been down at council meetings. We know that every solution, every possible solution, needs to be put on the table to this crisis, and there's, you know, no ownership over good ideas. And I think we're always looking to see what we can do as a city. We know that as a community, housing is a human right, and we want to push policy forward. And I think this council has in the past, and certainly has its eyes open, to what we can do in the future in partnership with the administration and certainly in the community. You know, I can't certainly speak for the council president and chair of favor who's not here with us this evening, but we'll certainly make sure that that request makes it their way. And also, Deputy Director Prosser, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add about those particular instances that the reverend mentioned?
No, I appreciate your response and appreciate the council's work in the past to work with us together to address such a significant crisis in our community. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Reverend. Thank you. Will the following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions? Will the clerk please now read the ordinances numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of expression 138X, 137X, 126X, 127X, 128X, 129X, 130X, 131X, 132X, 133X, and 136X, 2024. Finance and Governance Committee, 753, 1146, 1190, 1192, 1221, 1255, 1270, 1328-2024. Economic Development and Small Minority Business Committee, 1176, and 1240-2024. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances 786, 1089, 1222, and 1281-2024. Neighborhoods Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinances 1028, 1034, 1298-2024. Workforce Education and Labor Committee, ordinance 1362-2024. Housing Homelessness and Building Committees, ordinances 1141, 1179, and 1199, 1251, 1266-2024. Health Human Services and Equity Committee, ordinances 1056, 1136, 1188-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinances 868, 1138, 1161, and 1164-2024. Public Utilities Sustainability Committee, ordinances 233, 875, 1020, 1080, 1081, 1100, 1187, 1189, 1205, and 1213-2024. Under Rules and Policy Committee, we have appointments from the mayor's office, 114, 115, 116, 117, and 118-2024.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve these items designated as consent? Is there a second? Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Mr. Bangston? Barosa de Padilla? De Alcara? Green?
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 1034-2024, which I'm abstaining.
Remy? Weich? President Pro Tem Dorans?
Yes. Items are approved. We'll now proceed to the second reading of 30-day postponed emergency legislation. First committee to come before council is the Economic Development and Small Minority Business Committee. Councilmember Bangston chairs that committee. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem, tonight in the Economic Development and Small Minority Business Committee. For second reading, we have ordinance 1128-2024 to amend the 2023 capital improvements budget to authorize the transfer of funds within the development taxable bond funds, to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority to provide funding for a neighborhood public improvements pilot program that will provide funding to support small-scale development projects in the city's urban neighborhoods and to authorize the expenditure of $1 million from the development taxable bond fund. As mentioned in the title, this ordinance appropriates funds to support the execution of a brand-new pilot program out of our Department of Development aimed at supporting the completion of small capital projects that have incurred a tremendous amount of additional costs due to unforeseen city requirements and regulations. The private program, just to clarify, does not have a target-specific geography, rather a target population, which are smaller and minority developers who are finishing smaller-scale projects. And there is no timeline for a public application process at this time. But this is a pilot project that I'm really excited that our Department of Development is rolling out. They've put a lot of thought and work into this. Deputy Director Prosser, did you want to speak to this at all?
Certainly, thank you. Councilmember Bangston, President Pro Tem Dorans, really excited about this program and I think indicative of the innovative team in economic development. Historically, the three P projects have really been about really large projects, right, and supporting them through those infrastructure investments. And what our team combined with, not just the Office of Infrastructure Investments, which is led by Michelle Larson, but our small business team, really coming together to say, how is there a way that we could structure investment in our smaller businesses, making sure that they can get their projects across the finish line, making sure that we were doing it in a way that served their needs and do it in a way that is most effective. And so there's a pilot program to start to work with those small businesses and understand how best to design a program where we can support them in those infrastructure investments to make sure that both large and small projects in our economic development community can be realized.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Deputy Director, and just again commend the Department of Development for really taking the initiative to pilot this program. As we know, the city continues to grow. We want to make sure that there's equity in who's developing and where businesses are able to build and to grow in our community. And so whether it's pilot programs like this or other programs that we've seen, like the Emerging Developer Apprentice, I mean Accelerator Program, we want to ensure that as the city continues to grow, that we build the capacity of our developers in the community. If there are any, seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcara, Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Order is passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1206-2024 to amend ordinance number 2661-2023, passed by Columbus City Council on October 16th, 2023, to change the amount expended to $1 million, the funding source to the general fund, and from a grant agreement to a nonprofit service contract to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to $50,000 from the general fund job growth sub-fund to allow for the reimbursement of expenses incurred prior to the execution of a purchase order, to amend the 2023 capital improvements budget and to declare an emergency. This ordinance simply changes the funding source for the Ground for Growth Initiative from capital improvement dollars to general fund revenue dollars. As you know, this is a program that I have championed in partnership with our Department of Development to ensure that we are, again, having equity in our ground floor growth in the downtown area. This simply is just an administrative change to change the funding source. Heard any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcara, Green, Remy Weich, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Order is passed.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. That's all I have in my committee's decision.
Thank you, Councilmember. The next committee to come for council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Pro Tem. I have two ordinances today in public service and transportation. The first is 1111-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into a grant agreement with Smart Columbus LLC in the amount of $500,000 for the Resident e-bike subsidy program to continue the creation of multimodal transportation options for residents that reduces the carbon footprint in Columbus and to support our goal of carbon neutrality by 2050 and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure in the neighborhood initiatives sub-fund. Last year, together with Council President, we partnered with Smart Columbus to make the ownership of e-bikes more accessible to residents by starting the Resident e-bike subsidy program. Last year's pilot provided nearly 300 vouchers for residents who were interested in purchasing an e-bike with rebates ranging from $500 to $2,500 depending on income. This program was wildly successful with over 1,300 applicants within 24 hours. Nearly 70% of the vouchers have been claimed and redeemed. And as a result of the success, we're continuing what was once a pilot and is now a program for its second year. So we're excited to have two speakers with us tonight to speak on this ordinance. So I'd like to invite up Marcus Coachman to the podium to talk to us about his experience receiving an e-bike, along with Haley Allison from Smart Columbus. And Haley is the Director of Operations for Smart Columbus, so come on down.
Hello. My name is Marcus Coachman, and I did receive an e-bike from Smart Columbus. So originally, I used my car, like most people, to get around from place to place. It was pretty convenient, and it really was just cost-effective for me at the time. I didn't really consider buying an e-bike before because it was just too expensive, honestly. Like, when the low end of e-bikes were like $1,000, high end, $3,000, $4,000, $5,000. It wasn't in my budget. So during the time when I ended up getting the e-bike from Smart Columbus, I used my e-bike and my car interchangeably until my car eventually broke down, like I had power steering issues. So I ended up having to use the bike like strictly to get the working back. And I found out that that was very, very useful because I saved a ton of money using that method. that method. I rode it through the entire winter. I got all my items, like proper gear and whatnot, to stay equipped during the wintertime. So far to date, I rode it about 588 miles, which is, you can convert that to like car mileage and whatnot, and that's very useful, I'd say. I also saved $100 on gas, maintenance, parking, and whatnot, and I also used, well, I can use it as exercise tool as well. And overall, I believe the program is really exciting, and it's really valuable for me, and I think it was a really just uplifting thing that I was able to take part in.
Thank you, Marcus. It's great to have a representative here who's actually received an e-bike. I want to start by thanking Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, as well as President Harden, who spearheaded this initiative back in 2022, I believe, and we've spent a lot of time designing this program as Smart Columbus and really making sure that it works for the residents that are here in Columbus, as well as the e-bike retailers that we've worked with to stimulate the local economy, but then also provide an alternative mode of transportation for nearly 300 residents here in Columbus. We are so excited to do what we do best at Smart Columbus and learn from this last year, and iterate and improve upon the program as we come into this year's program. But I want to highlight just a couple of quick outcomes from this past year. We did a one-in-six-month follow-up survey with residents, and 60% felt that owning an e-bike allowed them greater access to work opportunities. 82% are actively replacing car trips with their e-bike, and 91% stated that they would not have purchased an e-bike without the program. With that, we have over 5,000 individuals who have expressed interest in the program, and then around 1,300 to 1,500 that actually did apply last year. And so we're looking forward to making improvements to things like education and outreach, and making sure that those who need e-bikes are the ones who are able to access these incentives as we go to distribute another 350 or so this upcoming year. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. Do my colleagues have questions for our speakers, any? I just wanted to say, Marcus, thank you for coming to share your story. This is what we wanted, like, when we think about making e-bikes more accessible to folks, right? And as we think about our growth in Columbus, we need to ensure that we are giving folks more options in terms of how they move about the city. And so ensuring that we can close the gap of accessibility costs about, on average, $12,000 to own a car, and that's a good car, right? And so I think giving folks the accessibility, both, you know, from a physical aspect, that it doesn't take the same amount of effort to ride an e-bike that it might to ride what I have now heard is called an acoustic bike. I think they're trying to make that happen, but that, you know, it's more efficient to ride that e-bike, that that really can be like your second vehicle, and that can get you around. And I just want to thank our partners at Smart Columbus that really helped to administer the program, learn from the program. I encourage folks with the passage of, hopefully in a second, if we pass this now, this will give us the ability to have another round of funding so that more folks can access the e-bike. And can you point folks in the right direction of, if they want to learn more, where to go?
Absolutely. To learn more about when applications might open, again, you'll visit columbusebikes.com.
Perfect, and I encourage folks to go after those e-bikes. We have intentionally thought about equity in all of its forms as we think about this, so I encourage the folks watching to learn more and to apply to get that subsidy. So thank you all for being here. If my colleagues have no other...
Yeah, Councilmember, I just want to thank you and Council President Harden for pushing this forward. I think we have people coming down to council all the time, rightfully talking about big changes we need to see in mobility and transportation in the city. And it feels like, when you think about a city that's primarily designed with a 1950s spraw mindset, and the Department of Public Service is trying to do their best to really change the way that we think about transit as a city, and you, as Chair of this committee, has helped to lead that way on council, this feels like such low-hanging but meaningful fruit for folks to be able to access this kind of thing. But I also want to mention, one of the bike shops that has participated in this program let us know this past year that this program helped keep them afloat, talking about the amount of jobs that they provide in their community that absent a program like this, Partnership of the City, they were in the position where they felt like they were going to need to lay people off. And this is good for the environment, it's good for transit, it's good for the community, and it's good for that business to keep folks employed. So just want to say thank you and to Council President for making that happen.
Absolutely, and I want to thank these bike shops because, I was saying, they are really much more, they are community assets. It's not just a place to go get a biker to get it tuned up, but they are really providing a service to the community, and they're all local. And so this program brings me great joy, especially as a now avid e-bike. Thanks, Coco. Whenever I ride with constituents, it's how I ride. So if there are no other comments or questions for my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Arcar, Green, Remy Weich, President Protem Dorans.
Sorry, can we go back? Yes. That was my bad. I was very, very excited. Can we move to reconsider?
Yes. Is there a second? Clerk, please call the roll. A motion to reconsider.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Arcar, Green, Remy Weich, President Protem Dorans.
Now I move to amend to emergency.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Arcar, Green, Remy Weich, President Protem Dorans.
And now I move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Arcar, Green, Remy Weich, President Protem Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you, and all my excitement, I was moving forward. Okay, next, we have ordinance 1236-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Service to modify a professional services contract with Park Mobile LLC relative to the mobile payment application system to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,200,000 from the Mobility Enterprise Operating Fund to pay for an additional year of this contract and to declare an emergency. The City of Columbus Department of Public Service manages the city's parking infrastructure. This ordinance authorizes the Director of Public Service to modify a professional services contract with Park Mobile LLC relative to the Park Columbus Mobile Payment Application. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Arcar, Green, Remy Weich, President Protem Dorans.
Passed.
Great, and that's all I have in my committees this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. The next committee to come for council is the Neighborhoods and Recreation and Parks Committee chaired by Councilmember De Arcar. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Protem Dorans. For the first ordinance in my committee this evening, I would like to turn the floor back over to my colleague, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, who's been a champion of the 614 Beautiful program since its inception. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Okay, so I wasn't here last week, so there's a lot of show and tell today, okay? Just giving you all the heads up. So this is for ordinance 0660-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Neighborhoods to modify the contract with the Neighborhood Design Center by extending the contract through July 31, 2025. This ordinance extends and modifies the contract with Neighborhood Design Center for the 614 Beautiful program through July 31, 2025. This extension will provide time for an additional round of beautification grant projects to be completed. The current contract began on August 31, 2023 and runs through July 31, 2024. I'm very excited to launch the third round of the 614 Beautiful program this Wednesday. We've funded nearly $200,000 towards 16 projects, with more than 60 organizations that have come together to collaborate on the projects, quite literally on every side of the city. 614 Beautiful is aimed at beautifying and unifying Columbus communities through place-based, public-facing improvements, and provides grant dollars of up to $15,000 to community organizations. So we have a speaker today, so Nora, if you will start to make your way up to the front. One of the things that I'm most excited about with 614 Beautiful is the collaboration. No one knows their neighborhood or community better than the people that live there, and this is an opportunity for residents. You can see it on the screens, the different projects that we have funded, and I'm especially excited about this one. This is a pocket park in Ayuka and Waldeck, and there was some excellent community engagement happening, which is the magic of 614 Beautiful. So I'm excited to hand it over to Nora Gerber, the Executive Director of the University District Organization and Community Business Association in City. That's very busy. Those are a lot of titles, Nora. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to speak at council about the 614 Beautiful grant. I'm Nora Gerber, the Executive Director of the University District Organization UDO. We are a nonprofit that creates, connects, and collaborates to promote economic growth and the quality of life in the university district's 13 diverse neighborhoods. Now, contrary to popular belief, the university district is not just college students. With just under 36,000 residents, our community includes growing families, long-term residents, new American families that are being settled here, graduate and professional students, young professionals, artists, and of course, the lively population of undergraduate Buckeyes. The 614 Beautiful grant, we are part of this second cohort of grant awardees. This opportunity allows us to engage with all parts of this community and to bring together, share ideas, and ultimately, for our project, create a new pocket park. So this all started, our pocket park idea, all started with a community engagement project that we identified a need to create more spaces for community to gather. And then the Indianola Presbyterian Church entered the conversation. The pastor, Tripp Porch, proposed transforming their front lawn into a green space, and we couldn't be more thrilled. This is when the 614 Beautiful grant came into the conversation as well, and we said, hey, we have this collaboration going, let's apply for this application. And part of our application also included an art component, and we are working with artist Adam Hernandez to create a totem-inspired sculpture representing the community of the university district. So the crux of all of this is community engagement at its heart, and this grant really allows us to do it from the very beginning. So already, we planned and have already done this, six different workshops, four with the general community taking place in each quadrant of our district, one with the Congregation of Indianola Presbyterian Church, and one with the church's many fraternity neighbors. We were allowed to engage with co-design researcher Camille Snyder to design and facilitate interactive workshops, which included Play-Doh, and blocks, and pipe cleaners, and pom-poms, all of which allowed us, were interactive, and allowed us to facilitate the conversation about what community means to our residents and people in the university district, as well as they got to build their ideal pocket park. So out of all of those workshops, we are now taking these findings to design it, and key highlights from these co-design workshops include zones for relaxation, performances, and play, and will incorporate ideas like flowers, pathways, seating areas, and lightings, all suggested by the participants who live and work there. We are now finally in these final stages, and we, throughout the summer, will have an implementation phase. Community volunteer days will be held to build the green space, culminating in a community event to celebrate the transformation, and the 614 Beautiful grant is allowing us to do all of this. This grant seriously wouldn't have been, this project seriously would not have been made possible without the support of council, the Neighborhood Design Center, and the Department of Neighborhoods. So I truly thank you for this opportunity and your investment in the university district's future.
Thank you, Nora. I just, this is one of many projects, from pocket parks to community gardens, to placemaking with banners, to murals that are taking place all over the city. And so we're excited about the community engagement, we're excited about leaving a legacy in these communities that are coming straight from our residents. And so thank you for elevating the voice of residents in the university district. Thank you for all the work that you did to create this beautiful space. I can't wait to see what it looks like. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Great, so just a reminder that the opening of 614 Beautiful, the next round of applications opens up this Wednesday. There'll be information on our social media channels. You can visit 614beautiful.org for more information. I highly suggest folks to apply. It's up to $15,000. So if, with no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Arcar, Green, Remy Weich, President Protem Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you, and back to Chair De Arcar.
Thank you, councilmember. It's exciting to see the continued work of this program. Next in this committee, we have ordinance 1045-2024 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with Design Workshop Incorporated for the Columbus Recreation and Parks 2025 to 2035 Master Plan Project to authorize the expenditure of $790,080 from the Recreation Parks Operating Fund 2285 and to declare an emergency. After much anticipation, the Recreation Parks Department is ready to enter into a contract with a consultant to create a 10-year strategic master plan for the department. This comprehensive plan will collect and analyze data on a variety of topics over the course of the next 12 months. These topics include level of service, operational practices, program services, and trends analysis. The project will engage deeply with diverse communities throughout Columbus to understand successes and gaps in service. Departmental staff will be engaged to assess opportunities for operational improvements and best practices. Studies completed by third parties in recent years analyzing the department's assets and programs will be utilized as well. This information will be reviewed, integrating into the conclusions and recommendations of the master plan. I, for one, am excited to see this process get started. This plan will be highly impactful for all of our residents as it aims to guide one of our largest departments for the next decade. It's no secret that the city will be growing fast in the coming years, and so the department is looking to be prepared for this growth by planning for what the future of our park system looks like, ensuring we have ample recreation opportunities for our growing city. This plan will be informed by data and is expected to be insightful, equitable, and directive in guiding the department into the future, ensuring services are being maximized for residents. This plan will also be heavily informed by community feedback, as the department will soon be announcing planned community and pop-up events this summer to engage with community members. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Arcar, Green, Remy Weich, President Protem Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you, President Protem Dorans. That's all I have today.
Thank you, councilmember. Next committee to come for council is the Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee. Councilmember Green is chairing that committee this evening. Councilmember?
Yes, Council President Protem. With your permission, clerk, I would like to go back, if possible, to page 10 in the Housing, Homelessness, and Building to ordinance number 1142-2024, which is to accept the application, Annexation 23-023 of Jackie Lee McNabb for the annexation of certain territory containing 9.45-plus acres in Jackson Township. This ordinance approves the acceptance of certain territory by the City of Columbus. The Ohio Revised Code stipulates that to be effective, the city must take, the city acceptance must take place a minimum of 60 days from the receipt by the city clerk of the approval notice from the county. If the city council does not accept the ordinance within 120 days of its first consideration, the annexation will be considered rejected. This petition was filed with Franklin County on January 4 of 2024. City Council approved a service ordinance addressing the site on January 8 of 2024. Franklin County approved the annexation on February 6 of 2024, and the city clerk received notice on February 22 of 2024. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to amend as emergency.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Arcar, Green, Remy Weich, President Protem Dorans.
Passed.
And now I move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Arcar, Green, Remy Weich, President Protem Dorans.
Passed.
Perfect. The second ordinance here, which is also on page 10, is ordinance number 1198-2024 to set forth a statement of municipal services and zoning conditions to be provided to the area contained in a proposed annexation, Annexation 24-002 of 22.1-plus acres in Franklin Township to the City of Columbus as required by the Ohio Revised Code, and to declare an emergency. The ordinance is being submitted to set forth the municipal services and zoning conditions the City of Columbus will provide upon annexation of a territory located in Franklin Township. This ordinance is required by the Ohio Revised Code as enacted by the General Assembly of the State of Ohio. An annexation petition has been filed with Franklin County for this property. A service ordinance must be passed before the annexation meeting takes place before the Board of County Commissioners or Franklin County. The timeframe specified in the ORC requires that legislation be filed as an emergency. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I move for, I move to refer this to committee.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Arcar, Green, Remy Weich, President Protem Dorans.
Refer to committee.
Thank you. That is all I have in Housing, Homelessness, and Building this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember, you have Health and Human Services and Equity?
I sure do.
Floor is still yours.
Okey-dokey, wonderful. So tonight in Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, we have two ordinances on second reading. The first one is 1150-2024 to The first one is 1150-2024 to authorize the appropriation of $1,78,587.63 from the unencumbered cash balance of the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund for the provision of home and community-based services for older adults in central Ohio, and to authorize the transfer of funds and appropriations between projects in the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund. As of December 31st, 2023, the agreement between CO AAA and CareSource has expired. CO AAA is no longer acting as the case management service provider for the Ohio Home Care Waiver Program in central Ohio that CO AAA operates. At the termination of the service contract, CO AAA maintained the remainder of the unspent funds secured for providing case management services. This ordinance authorizes CO AAA to reinvest those funds to support additional home and community-based services for older adults and people with disabilities in central Ohio. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, De Akar, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed.
Wonderful. And then, finally, I would like to actually turn the floor over to my colleague, Councilmember Borosa de Padilla, who will introduce the next ordinance in our committee.
Thank you, Chair Green. The next ordinance is 1165-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement in the amount of up to $350,000 with Choice Network to support their Choice Center, and to authorize the appropriation expenditure of up to $350,000 from the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund. Choice Network Incorporated, or Choice, is a not-for-profit organization whose purpose is to provide factual information, affirmative counsel, and barrier-free support to pregnant people, people seeking to parent, and at-risk parents and their children, without judgment of their circumstances, identity, or choices. Choice Network specializes in working to ensure every family makes the best choice for themselves with the guidance of a trusted and objective team of professionals. Services offered for birth mothers include a personalized adoption plan, counselor, and support network available 24 hours a day, as well as grief counseling and support groups. Services provided for adopted applicants includes application interview, home study, education and training, placement, pre-and post-finalization services, as well as pre-and post-counseling and support groups. We do have a representative from Choice who is here today, Molly, not Molly, come on down. I know everyone's here, I know the whole Choice team is here. So if you want to come down and introduce yourself, and the floor is yours.
Hi. Thank you, Councilmember Borosa de Padilla, and all councilmembers. My name is Laura Sullivan, and I'm the Chief Program Officer at Just Choice. At Just Choice, we are passionately co-creating a future where pregnant people and parents receive the support and dignity they deserve in the vibrant city of Columbus. We are actively listening and responding to the needs of families we serve. Our approach isn't about imposing traditional programs onto communities, it's about fostering genuine collaboration and trust. Just Choice works alongside families, forming coalitions, and nurturing genuine community connections. We're grateful for the City of Columbus, sorry, grateful for the City of Columbus for supporting our work. I thought it would be helpful to share a few impactful stories, to illustrate what our work looks like, and just how important continued funding is to our community. We continue building strong relationships and coalitions with Celebrate One, Sanctuary Night specialty courts like Catch Court and Empowerment Court, Ohio Women's Alliance, the Abortion Fund of Ohio, Motherful, and the YWCA, just to name a few, in our community. As we delve into the heart of our mission in Columbus, let me introduce you to a few of our families. TW, a mother deeply affected, my dictation keeps taking me back to the top of my notes, sorry.
It's okay.
TW, a mother deeply affected by gun violence. She lived in a shelter. Her car provided her her sole stability and connections. Resources for maintaining her vehicle were scarce, so we used our mutual aid funds to repair her car and ensure she had connection to her community, and maintained her stable employment for her children. HG, a young mom who was a human trafficking victim, wanted to enter drug treatment. She was parenting a seven-month-old baby. We were able to host that baby for her while she maintained the days clean that she needed in order to enter that treatment program with her baby with her. So we kept that family together. JP is a teenager who was entangled in the criminal legal system and foster care system. She didn't have an advocate or a voice. The professionals in her life could only see her past mistakes, and not all the healing work that she had accomplished. With our advocacy, she's with the host family, thriving, she's graduating early, she's continuing her healing, she's engaged in extracurricular activities, and is employed, all while maintaining contact with her biological family. AH and WZ, teenagers living on their own, surviving on the streets the best they could. This, as you can imagine, leads to less than ideal behaviors. Just Choice was able to build trust with these teens, invite them into our hosting program, and because they trusted us, they were both able to be key members on championship-winning teams, graduate, and begin to heal and imagine a future that was brighter than they had ever imagined, again, maintaining contact with their biological family. MG, a 39-week-pregnant 17-year-old permanently committed to the foster care system, who had been unlocatable for over a year, showed up in a juvenile detention center. She was referred to us at 39 weeks pregnant, and we were able to quickly locate a host family for her, where she was able to deliver her baby safely with support and care around her, not in the detention center. We've been able to build slow trust and introduce harm reduction practices with her, and this young mama is planting seeds for generational healing. We are witnessing a distressing uptick in sexual violence against children. In Columbus, young victims of rape endure a disturbing burden, carrying pregnancies, they didn't want to parent, and in the past 18 months, we've supported six teenagers in creating adoption or parenting plans. Those six teenagers had all been victims of sexual assault. This trend highlights the urgent need for direct action and continued support for our work. Thank you, City of Columbus and councilmembers, for supporting our work, standing in the spaces with families that have been ignored, harmed, and that are looking for hope for the future. We cannot do this work without the hope for change and liberation that this council holds. Thank you, and I would, I brought a real-life storyteller to just jump in really quick. So I'll introduce you to my colleague, Miriam.
Okay. Hi, I've never met any of you before, so it's a pleasure to be here. Y buenas tardes, Borosa de Padilla, que placer de conocerte. So I was born here in Columbus, and I also spend part of my year in Columbia, which is also named for the same man, who we won't name today. And I don't think it's lost on any of us that today is the day after Mother's Day, right? And I don't think anyone in the room could argue about how important mothers are to our communities, to our families, to our schools, to our hospitals, right? And 20 years ago, I was 19, and 20 years ago, I had an adoption process, and I wasn't lucky enough to have a Just Choice in Ohio, because 20 years ago, there was no such thing as Just Choice. And Just Choice remains to be the only all-options resource center for pregnant people in the state, pregnant people. We don't coerce people, we don't shame them, we don't blame them for the situations that they're in, because we believe that we belong to each other. We don't believe that our children are just our own children. We believe that the world becomes a better place when we are able to open our doors and let people live there with us, when we don't step over homeless people, but we see what we can give. So we really thank you for this continued funding. It's important to pregnant people in the state of Ohio, as there's an increasing red line drawn to the south of us on who gets to access what and for what reason. But in Ohio, we've heard what the people of Ohio really want, I think it's clear to all of us. And we're here, and we're ready to serve our communities, even if that means we have to step in as mothers whenever we can, for whoever we can, for whatever reason. To be able to offer those services to people is a gift, and with this gift, we're going to grow those seeds into Columbus, and give pregnant people, moms, parents, prospective parents, LGBTQ-plus prospective parents looking to adopt, a resource, a community, and a group of moms, really. So thank you.
So I want to say thank you, Choice. Thank you for your continued advocacy. Happy belated Mother's Day to all the moms out there, and all the ways that they mother. The continued funding is because we understand that you all stand in and fill gaps for our families, and providing them a space where they can really find and make the best decisions for themselves. And even at a time when you're correct, while the voters have spoken, we still have legislators that are peeling back what the people have said, the people of Ohio have said that they wanted. And so, not just funding Choice, but the coalition of organizations that you all work for, the Ohio Women's Alliance, Motherful, the YWCA, all stand together at the front lines, really helping all of our families, our mothers, and ensuring that they are getting the access that they need to information, to healthcare, and to the resources. And so that's why I'm so proud today to put this forward, for this council's consideration of this ongoing funding for both mutual aid and all of the things that you mentioned that Choice offers to our communities. So, do my colleagues have any questions or comments? With that, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, De Akar, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you, congratulations. And you can bring babies anytime you want. It's like an emotional support baby in this council chambers. Chair Green, back to you.
Thank you, and thank you, President Pro Tim. That is all I have in my committee tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. The next committee to come forward, council, is Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, chaired by Councilman Remy. Councilman Remy, floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Pro Tim. Tonight I have one ordinance, Public Safety and Criminal Justice, that's 175-2024, to authorize the Public Safety Director to enter into a contract with RQI Partners LLC for resuscitation quality improvement for the Division of Fire, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, and to authorize the expenditure of $156,907.50 from the general fund. This program will continue to assist the Fire Division in managing CPR certifications of personnel using American Heart Association Training Certification Professionals and Portable Simulation Stations. This program provides immediate feedback to improve performances, communicates metrics via tracking software that measures success, and will reduce the division's reliance on costly in-classroom recertification. Deputy Director Jan Gardella, could you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
Yes, Pro Tim Dorans, Chair Remy, members of council, this is a particular software we've used for a number of years. It's a web-based software in our fire stations. It's proved to be extremely efficient, particularly for EMS software, and as you said, we no longer have to have individuals come down to the fire stations, come out, pay overtime to backfill those positions, and we've been very pleased and happy with it, and we'd like to continue to use it. So thank you for consideration, this ordinance, this evening.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, De Akar, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you very much. That is all I have in Public Safety and Criminal Justice this evening.
Thank you, councilmember. The next committee to come forward, council, is the Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, chaired by Councilman White. Councilman, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pro Tim. I have 10 ordinances in my committee this evening. First, I have ordinance 845-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and increase a professional engineering services contract with Hill International for the Professional Contract Management Services 2020 contract, to authorize an amendment to the 2023 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation within the Water Bond Fund, and to authorize an expenditure of up to $9,960,500 from the Water Bond Fund to pay for the modification. This contract assists the city with managing a capital improvement program consisting of multiple improvement projects to ensure completion in accordance with design requirements while serving as a liaison between the construction contractor, design professionals, and city personnel. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, De Akar, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next I have ordinance 954-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a professional services contract modification for the overall engineering services contract with MS Consultants, Inc., to authorize an amendment to the 2023 City of Columbus Capital Improvement Budget, to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation between projects within the Water Bond Fund, and to authorize an expenditure of up to $1 million from the Water Bond Fund for the contract. This contract supplements existing engineering personnel within Division of Water on an as authorized as needed basis, and provides a variety of professional services to meet the planning, operation, and capital improvement needs for the Division of Water facilities. Let me stop there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, De Akar, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next I have ordinance 1066-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to modify and increase the contract with AECOM Technical Services, Inc., engineers for the Water Distribution System SCADA Improvements Project, to authorize an amendment to the 2023 Capital Improvement Budget, to authorize the transfer of funds between projects within the Water Bond Fund, and to authorize an expenditure of up to $1,699,708.93 from the Water Bond Fund to pay for the contract modification. This contract involves having a consultant evaluate the SCADA system, which is the supervisory control and data acquisition system, upgrade options and design state-of-the-art improvements for the City of Columbus's water distribution system. This is the first of two planned contract modifications. This contract modification will fund detailed design services. The second planned contract modification will be for engineering services during construction. Pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, De Akar, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next I have ordinance 1075-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to modify and increase the contract with Black and Beach Corporation for the Lower Olentangie Tunnel Phase 1 project, to authorize an amendment to the 2023 Capital Improvement Budget, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds from the Sanitary Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Freshwater Market Rate Program Fund, and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to $5,072,270.32 from the Sanitary Freshwater Market Rate Program Fund for the contract. This is a planned contract modification that adds funds to continue the project. Existing city staffing levels are not adequate to devote multiple qualified personnel full-time to management of the project construction activities. Therefore, professional contract management services are needed to ensure construction of the Lower Olentangie Tunnel follows the requirements and specifications of the project designed to achieve the intended function. Let me pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, De Akar, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next I have ordinance 1086-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Alfred, Inc., for the Division of Water Safety Improvements Project, to authorize an amendment to the 2023 Capital Improvement Budget, to authorize the transfer of cash between projects, but then the Water Pay Go Fund, to appropriate funds within the Water Pay Go Fund, and to authorize an expenditure of up to $2,158,200 for the project. This project will install safety improvements at various Division of Water facilities to comply with OSHA regulations and safety practices. Let me stop there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Borosa de Padilla, De Akar, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 1099-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a contract with RCC Global LLC for the Customer Information System and Integrated Systems Upgrade Project, and to authorize the expenditure of $5,997,529 split among the electricity, water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater operating funds. Our current customer information system, Hanson Banner, was implemented in 1999. The CASI is the system that is used to calculate and generate bills, working as the repository of all utility rates, fees, charges, service orders, and customer information. Over the years, DPU has added several custom programs, as well as workaround solutions, to the existing platform, which has significantly added to system complexity, operating risk. The project is expected to be completed sometime in 2026. DPU implemented Oracle's Customer Cloud Service for metadata management. DPU implemented Oracle's Customer Cloud Service for metadata management in 2022 as part of the Enhanced Metering Project, which is expected to continue through 2027. Numerous custom integrations were created to sync meter data between Oracle's CCS and Hanson Banner, making the management of the lifecycle of meters with two separate systems difficult and cumbersome. Merging these systems into one platform should reduce system complexity, increase data and billing accuracy, as well as make it easier to support the system into the future. Let me pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 1130-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Underground Utilities, Inc., for the Clearview Avenue Area Water Line Improvements, to authorize an amendment to the 2023 Capital Improvement Budget, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds from the Water System Reserve Fund to the Water Freshwater Market Rate Program Fund, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to $4,419,254.62 from the Water Freshwater Market Rate Program Fund for the contract, and to authorize an expenditure of up to $2,000 from the Water Bond Fund to pay for prevailing wage services for the project. The work consists of open-cut installation of approximately 11,000 linear feet of water mains connecting to existing water taps, installing new private water services to six properties, including new interior piping and meters, banning an existing water main in accordance with the JARs, technical specifications, special provisions, and the City of Columbus construction materials specifications. Pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 1154-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Performance Pipe Lining, Inc., for the Blueprint Clintonville Old Beachhold Lateral Lining Project, to authorize an amendment to the 2023 Capital Improvement Budget, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, to authorize the appropriation of funds within the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, and to authorize an expenditure of up to $1,602,479.70 from the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund and the Sanitary Bond Fund to pay for the project. This project involves the lining of sanitary laterals of 133 homes, approximately 5,800 linear feet via trenchless methods using curing-in-place piping technology to prevent excess stormwater from entering the city's sanitary sewer system. The trenchless pipe lining uses existing pipes to guide new and improved pipes into the sewage system. Sewer lateral lining repair uses special sewage pipes that are flexible and able to fit inside existing pipes. Once the new pipes have been pulled through, they are inflated and effectively replace the old pipes. So very cool, innovative technology. Let me pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 1234-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to renew the contract with SGI Matrix LLC for security system parts installation, maintenance, monitoring, repair, and support services for the Department of Public Utilities to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $32,739 split among the electricity, water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater operating funds, and to declare an emergency. SGI Matrix LLC has installed all the badge readers and has maintained the software subsystem and building controllers since the systems were installed at the Department of Public Utilities facilities. SGI Matrix utilizes KNS services as a subcontractor on the project to run cabling and place the equipment, but SGI Matrix LLC will provide installation, final hookup, and testing and program of devices. Due to the proprietary nature of the security software and compatibility of existing security equipment, it is in the best interest of the city to waive the provisions of competitive bidding and renew the contract. Pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. And last, we have ordinance 1243-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Service to execute a service contract with Rubicon for the provisions of GPS tracking and route diagnostics for the Division of Refuge Collection, and to waive competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of up to $134,160 from the Refuge Collection General Fund to pay for the contract and to declare an emergency. The aforementioned project will allow the Division of Refuge Collection to maximize efficiencies and to assess streets for potholes, illegal dumping, and other street maintenance as the vehicles travel around their assigned routes. Let me pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you for the heavy lifting tonight, Councilmember White. And with that, that is our meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn meeting number 26? Is there a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
We are adjourned. We will move into the not-adjourned. Zoning Committee, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal's approved. We'll now move to the zoning committee. I chair, I chair the zoning committee, and all members serve in that committee. Allow me to briefly explain our current rules pertaining speaking before council on rezonings and variances. We only hear a staff presentation for ordinance that have a disapproval from a recommending body, or if we have a public speaker deciding to speak against an ordinance. Only those who own property within 125 feet of an address, or are subject to a council variance, are legally able to make public comments, per the advice of the City Attorney's Office. All speakers on the council variance, including area commission, city staff, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in if they give testimony. Representatives of an area commission, applicants are always able to speak on an ordinance and do not need to fill out a speaker slip. We did not receive any public speaker slips for tonight's agenda, and all three ordinance has had full approval from recommending bodies. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, I will now swear in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand, be sworn in. Do you swear from the testimony you are to give? Shall be the truth, nothing but the truth. Do you shall answer in a pain of penalty or perjury? If so, please say I do. Please let the record reflect that Tim Dietrich from the Department of Building and Zoning Services has been sworn in. First, we have ordinance 1264-2024 to rezone 2995 Morris Road, 0.69 acres located on the south side of Morris Road, 435 plus feet west of Westerville Road from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The site consists of two parcels developed with retail building and billboard proposed rezoning will allow automobile sales. The proposal has approval from city staff, the Development Commission, and the Northeast Area Commission. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Ordinance passed. Next, we have moving the council variances portion of the agenda, which is ordinance 1259-2024, granted variance provisions of Section 3356.3, C4 permitted use of 3312.43 limited, or I'm sorry, improved surface required, 3312.49 required parking in the Columbus City Code, so property located at 2287 East Fifth Avenue to allow single-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the C4 commercial district. Site is developed with a single-unit dwelling that includes type A daycare home facility component. The requested council variance will conform the existing single-unit dwelling. The proposal has support from city staff and the North Central Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the staff report and new evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Accepted. I next move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
And, I'm sorry, adopted, and finally, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Passed. Next, we have ordinance 1265-2024 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3332.035, R3 Residential District 3312.25 maneuvering, 3312.29 parking space in Columbus City Code, so property located at 613 South Champion Avenue, if you perform a six-unit apartment building with reduced development standards, the R3 residential district. The site consists of, with a six-unit apartment building, and the requested council variance will conform that existing use. The council variance is required because the current zoning code districts specify single-unit dwellings as the only allowable residential use. The proposal has support from city staff, the Historic Resource Commission, and the Livingston Avenue Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the staff report and new evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Accepted. I next move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Accepted. I next move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Adopted, and finally, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Thank you. Finally, we have ordinance 1268-2024 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3332.037, R2F Residential District 3333, 2.08, .05 A4 area district lot with requirements, 3332.14 R2F area district requirements, 3332.19 fronting, 33332.25 max side yard required, and 3332.26 minimum side yard permitted, 3332.27 rear yard, and 3332.29 height district of the Columbus City Code, so property located at 266-268 North Monroe Avenue to allow two-unit dwelling and a single-unit dwelling carriage house on one lot with reduced development standards in the R2F residential district. The site consists of one parcel developed with a two-unit dwelling. The requested council variance will allow a single-unit dwelling above attached garage, better known as a carriage house, for a total of three dwellings on one lot. A council variance is necessary because the current zoning only allows one single unit or two-unit dwelling on a lot. The proposal has support from city staff and the Near East Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the staff report and new evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Accepted. I next move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Thank you. And finally, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
And finally, I need to make a motion to dispose of the journal. Is there a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Thank you. Passed, and that is all we have in tonight's meeting agenda. Have a good evening, everyone. Motion to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Archera, Green, Remy White, President Pro Tem, Dorans.
Adjourned. Have a good evening.